What do you do, George?
I'm here for my wife.
Been hat yourself?
I have.
You have?
I have been by hat yourself.
You know about me?
It's a hat, hat.
You got that wide. You're not getting that over there.
I went in there. I'm trying to get it, Johnny.
Hey, can you please?
We're waiting on our turn.
We're probably on number one.
Hey Joyce. You didn't take a lawyer out there, did you?
I think I did.
Oh, okay.
Yes. If I can make a suggestion, can't you get started?
Good evening. We have a couple of things that we need to do. Does everyone hear me okay? I guess first thing on the agenda is being sworn in again. Apparently there's some controversy, so we need to put it to bed. As I stated in our first session this year, we probably will make mistakes. I'm new at this, I own up to it. So, that being said, I believe you take it from here.
Yes, and if one of you would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to provide for the swearing-in of the mayor and Mr. Venable.
Oh, may I ask a question before I make the motion? I understand why we're doing it, and I understand that Watkinsville had some difficulties with their mayor, but their mayor was not working with the city government at all. And we and our new mayor have been working with the government and helping transition out. Two months or immediately after the election, he began to transition. And it also states that in the same article that five previous mayors, including the current one, this is in Watkinsville, were sworn in, also sworn in on the second of January. And I'm wondering why we're questioning the legality of it. If we advertised for the meeting and I'm trying to figure out why we're doing this again.
And I've got a statement to read into the minutes, but I don't think there's a question about the legality of it. This is more of a formality reaffirming all this stuff previously. So, I can...
So, are we legal or are we not?
Yes, yes.
So, if we're legal, then we're legal. It's black and white, we don't...
So, it's procedural?
Correct. Now, the recommendation of council is to make a motion to amend the agenda to provide for the swearing-in of the mayor and Mr. Venable. And, I mean, it's up to you guys to make that motion and go forward with it with the swearing-in. But that is city attorney's recommendation.
I'll make the motion.
Council person, Betty, how are you doing? In favor? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
Tonight Mayor Piper and Councilmember Venable will be sworn in. They have each taken an oath of office and signed that oath, and it is filed with the clerk as required by Section 308 of the Charter. State law also requires that the oath be taken at the first meeting of the New Year. Mayor Piper and Councilmember Venable did take their oath in public, but not at a meeting. The special call meeting on January 3rd is technically the first meeting, and Mr. Thrasher asked to be and was sworn in then. Tonight's work session is the first official meeting of the mayor and council of the year, and the mayor and councilmember Venable will be sworn in at this meeting. At the special call meeting on January 3rd, Mr. McCormick was elected vice mayor. The purpose of doing it then was the previous vice mayor, Jerry Barton, was no longer in office, and the city needed a vice mayor in the event Mayor Piper was indisposed. The Charter requires that the vice mayor be elected for a two-year term at the first regular meeting of the New Year, and the first regular voting meeting is Tuesday. Also, although the Charter states that the vice mayor is elected by ballot, suggesting perhaps secrecy, both the number of votes for each candidate and who cast them must be publicized. That process will occur at Tuesday's meeting. And so, Mayor, if you'd like to, we can do this however you'd like. If you want to sit down, you can, or I can just read the oath to you. Sit down, okay? You raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Joe Piper.
A citizen of Barrow County, state of Georgia.
A citizen of Barrow County, state of Georgia.
Do you hereby solemnly swear and affirm?
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will well, truly, and faithfully...
That I will well, truly, and faithfully...
Discharge the duties of mayor of the city of state of Georgia?
Discharge the duties...
Of mayor?
Of mayor of the city of state of Georgia.
And that I will support?
And that I will support.
And defend?
And defend.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitutions and laws.
Of the state of Georgia?
Of the state of Georgia.
And the United States of America?
And the United States of America.
And that I will in all respects...
And that I will in all respects...
Observe the provisions?
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter?
Of the Charter.
And ordinances?
And ordinances.
Of the city of state of?
Of the city of state of.
I do further solemnly swear?
I do further solemnly swear.
And affirm?
And affirm.
That I am not the holder?
That I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted-for?
Of any accounted-for.
Any unaccounted-for.
Any unaccounted-for, accounted-for?
Public money?
Public money.
Do this state?
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision?
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof?
Or authority thereof.
That I am not the holder?
That I am not the holder.
Of any office of trust?
Of any office of trust.
Under the government?
Under the government.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
Any other state?
Any other state.
Or any foreign state?
Or any foreign state.
Which, by the laws?
By the laws.
Of the state of Georgia?
Of the state of Georgia.
I am prohibited from holding?
I am prohibited from holding.
That I am otherwise qualified?
That I am otherwise qualified.
To hold said office?
To hold said office.
According to?
According to.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
And laws of Georgia?
And laws of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God.
You raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Gary Bubba.
A citizen of Barrow County.
A citizen of Barrow County.
State of Georgia.
State of Georgia.
Do you hereby solemnly swear and affirm?
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will well?
That I will well.
Truly?
Truly.
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of councilman?
The duties of councilman.
Of the city of state of Georgia?
Of the city of state of Georgia.
And that I will support?
And that I will support.
And defend?
And defend.
The Constitution?
The Constitution.
And laws?
And laws.
Of the state of Georgia?
Of the city of Georgia.
And the United States of America?
And the United States of America.
And that I will in all respects?
And that I will in all respects?
Observe the provisions?
Observe the provisions.
Of the Charter?
Of the Charter.
And ordinances?
And ordinances.
Of the city of state of?
Of the city of state of.
I do further solemnly swear?
I do further solemnly swear.
And affirm?
And affirm.
That I am not the holder?
That I am not the holder.
Of any unaccounted-for?
Of any unaccounted-for.
Public money?
Public money.
Do this state?
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision?
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof?
Or authority thereof.
That I am not the holder?
That I am not the holder.
Of any office of trust?
Of any office of trust.
Under the government?
Under the government.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
Any other state?
Any other state.
Or any foreign state?
Or any foreign state.
Which by the laws?
Which by the laws.
Of the state of Georgia?
Of the state of Georgia.
I am prohibited from holding?
I am prohibited from holding.
That I am otherwise qualified?
That I am otherwise qualified.
To hold said office?
To hold said office.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws of Georgia?
And laws of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God.
A quick question. You said the vice mayor would be done on Tuesday?
Correct.
Okay. Something that I forgot to do. I like to do the pledge of allegiance, so if we could all stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal, and just as for all.
And I'd also like to thank all the veterans. Make it possible to be able to leave the public without a fairer retribution. Okay, at this time I have only the end of Timothy Casper.
Tim Casper, Tim fourteen, the man in red and wider pants. I'm just here tonight to try to figure out what the secrets are. We have this property we want to rezonate. It's five, we want more residential state or residential subdivision. The property is zoned residential now, but it's an horrible residential. What we wanted to do is basically the exact same thing with the properties estates, which is subdivision. I know what you said. My engineer worked mad at it. We have a concept drawing of what we're proposing, and we have a drawing on the thing of what the properties states. Which one of what make processes to go forward and ask for something?
Have you been to planning and zoning through your veritas, or y'all?
So, I found the manual online, I was reading it through, and I wasn't aware it was already done to R1. But it says in the general conditions that an area may be qualified for use by right for the conservation overlay district if the climate conditions exist. And that it's done to R1, R N1, R Z, R3, a minimum of acreage of five acres, and has capacity for city water and sewer connection.
Which it has.
Is it the fifty acres?
Seventy-four acres.
Seventy-four acres.
Just behind the bank and behind the ones, how big that property, what that property industry was behind it.
That's wonderful.
So, we're looking at an overlay conservation district, which entails thirty-three percent of open space?
Yes.
Smaller lots, twenty-foot front setbacks, twenty-foot beers, five-foot sides.
If you write the properties states, it's the exact same thing. They figure out, it's a lot, I don't know if you should. It's been built in the house.
Okay, yes.
Really nice house.
Those are the homes, are y'all?
So, this is the one that was final platter in 2016, the properties?
That's probably the states.
Yeah, so this is pretty much what we're mimicked on this.
Fortunately, what size of a lot?
Minimum allowable sixty-foot, and this plan is showing sixty-foot wide lots.
Any square footage? That's four acres, eight acres. Half acre, you know, how big are they?
About quarter acre.
Quarter acre, mm. So, approximately, just like what, just went in on Oak Springs?
Yes.
Kind of close to the other. You're right, so properties states, very nice house.
Oh, yeah, I love the homes. How many good floor plans are you?
About two.
Yeah, to build or to...
Yes.
You guys are developing them.
Of course, I'm just developing the property, but it will follow what the regulations were for a three-sided masonry foundation.
Yes.
So, if you look through there, I'll get a nice box foundation.
Is it a slab, slab homes?
Yeah, they're slab, but it has a box foundation around it. It looks like it's on a foundation, so it's not, you know, side to the ground. What is our next step to require, ask for rezoning?
Well, if it's zoned residential, I don't think you have to ask for rezoning here, but you would be going through the...
On Oak Springs?
Uh, planning, you're planning and zoning process, which is done through your veritas here of the city. So, have you all made contact with them yet? Your veritas? There are inspectors.
But it's through Jerry.
Jerry.
Jerry was. He's your engineer.
He does, we utilize him, and I have a meeting with him next Tuesday.
I asked him to come by, he said he no longer have contract with the city.
Well, I did talk to him, and he said he wasn't able to make it. He couldn't talk until next Tuesday, so I did reach out to him for the same reason. So, he doesn't have a year contract or anything with us, but he has done work for us, he did work for us, I believe in November and December, on a build-work basis. So, but I did reach out to him, and like I said, he wasn't able to be here tonight. And the earliest that I can sit down with him is next Tuesday, so...
Do we need to move forward working with Jerry on this then? Is that for sure?
Well, I think the city of state of needs to work with him to discuss. Apparently, the plot that you have there had been done previously, I believe in November of last year. There's one floating around, which I have a copy of. I don't know where it came from, I believe.
Yeah, I haven't seen, that was my own, so I haven't seen it.
Yeah, there is one that looks exactly like that.
And I know Jerry, so I will contact him and try to see.
But I'll be sitting down with him, because that was one of the things that I want to discuss with him.
Okay.
And there are two other developments in state that we want to move forward on, so... But we have to make sure that our infrastructure is prepared for it. I'm all for growth, but I have to be cautious too.
I spoke with the water department, we're gonna have to extend the twelve-inch water line on the other side of the road, which will probably entail a jack and bore, instead of moving it all the ways around to the asset.
Are you talking about the railroad?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you'd have to work with CSX?
Excuse me?
You'd have to work with CSX?
Yes, definitely work. I have a gentleman who has permits, it is a process, but it is doing.
Okay, and then as far as sewer, there'd be extensive stuff there too? You're aware of that?
Yes.
Okay. So?
Yes, so our first step is we'd like to have a preliminary platter people sign, so once we get that signed, we can take care of those contracts and proceed with the journey.
So, how many houses are you planning to build?
This layout is a hundred and sixty-six, so it'll be around that range. The zoning allows four units per acre, and we are at, I think, almost... Not exactly half that, but we're at two-point-two-six lots per acre. So, we're going to be below that, we'll be pretty good.
You guys are meeting the green space requirements?
Yes, so this plan has forty-three percent on this show, thirty-three percent is the benefit.
Are you planning any commercial furnished?
No.
That's a lot of homes without some businesses to support too.
Well, if we're gonna have a nice subdivision, we're gonna turn it aside, go pantry, you know, turn it aside, go pantry, turn your house, because there's not that much really for it there. If you look at the plan, you're gonna have a house back up.
There's some environmental, there's a pipeline of road, there's some environmental issues that we'll kind of have to stay away from, so we're looking at kind of one entrance over here on this side.
What option of running parallel to Atlanta Highway, is that an option? Or something like that?
For commercial?
Yeah, for some commercial business type to, as furnished for...
If you want to look at this, you want, it's really not, the space here not being utilized, which you can't use. I mean, there's nothing right there.
Jordan, do you have anything to add on this?
No, I think we're going to have a meeting about the, what may change on this plan there, things for utilities and things like that, and meeting with Jerry next week. Go from there, and then ask the lead on.
Well, at ten o'clock on Tuesday, I have a meeting with Jerry here.
Okay.
And this is one of the properties, like I said, and we want to talk about, make sure that we're doing everything the right way. I'm a firm believer, get all your ducks in a row before you make a decision. So, and then at that point, I can, I'd be more than happy to get back to you and let you know what the next step is for both the city and you.
All right, post-antech to Jerry, and I'll contact you.
Is it possible we need to talk to him about it?
Sure.
Yeah, I was just asking.
We're gonna decide on the end of Jerry, sorry.
Yeah, I'll send him PDFs tomorrow, so I'll have everything.
All right.
I'll work with him on that.
Are you emailing him PDFs?
Yes.
Is it this, or you're emailing?
Yes.
You need to know us as well.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. We're excited you guys are here, that's a nice...
Yeah.
That's a nice addition to our city. The homes you guys are building are nice, nice people buy nice homes, so it's gonna be a great addition to our community. We just want to take every precaution necessary for, basically, the administration. We want to take all the precaution necessary and make sure that we protect our future interests and that we cover all the infrastructure, all the rules, and, you know, that we don't skip anything, so, you know.
I'll leave mine at the seat. Also, if you call me anytime, any questions?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Tahita Mex Grill. Are they represented tonight? Good evening.
Good evening, Ari. So, we're just here to see if we can get the renewal for the alcohol license, and if there's any way we can make the process a little bit easier for next time. Never imagined we would have to go through the whole process all over again, because that was something we'd like to see.
Well, I do know that you all met the criteria of advertising at least twice. My city clerk showed me the advertisements, so that is a requirement. And we can all, we can't, we cannot vote tonight, this is our session, so we entertain public opinion and what you have to offer, so... But then, you know, we should be able to move forward on it, but we would all have to address it next Tuesday.
Okay.
Mayor, I have a question for legal counsel. Do we require background checks before my license, is it all on you, or is it also on the list?
I am not certain whether it's required on the renewal. I know it would be required for the initial application, and it may also be required in the renewal, I'm not sure. But I just don't know the trade-off off the top of my head. I can look at that and tell you.
Get that to us Thursday?
Sure.
And as far as the license, it'll be, there's no change, is there? It's gonna be someone else's name, or?
No.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you.
Sorry?
Maria?
No, Maria's over here after, but I'll be right there.
Is there any discussion on Tex Mex request? Okay, moving on to the next on the agenda is Georgia City's week, and... That is April nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, and I had K4 AR city clerk go ahead and respond back to them. They basically send out some... They send out some banners and... Okay, they send banners and some posters and whatnot, and we generally put them up.
And we generally put them up. In the past, I guess we haven't really done a whole lot, but you know, between now and then, I'm hoping maybe I can come up with something that, you know, we all could meet at the gazebo or whatever and do like a, just a meet and greet for the citizens. But it's something that they do every week, every year. And so try and put something out on the bulletin and Facebook and, you know, try to make everyone aware of it.
I reached out to, well, I talked to Winterfield's mayor, Dodd Farrell, the other day about this. They just got a huge grant from the state for the Firefly Trail, which basically is a huge walking and pedestrian trail that's gonna connect like 20 miles of pathways through Watkinsville. We just talked to him generally, and he wants to come, he wants to come and visit with us and invited us to come visit them in their council meeting. So I think, I think they're a like city like us, and I think it would be nice to work with Dodd.
I met the new mayor a week or two ago. And they new mayor's meet over in Monroe. Some good people. Anything else? Next on the agenda would be Edman Nelson. He has a proposal for a roll-out bar for possibly serving beer and wine.
Good evening, please.
Which would require alcohol license.
It's just some pictures and some specs on what we're talking about. Trying to get a little aim before getting in the downtown district. And you see that the city's growing, 100 and something of homes trying to come in here. That's-